That's mine.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Call it the order. City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session. Monday, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, six P M. Anamosa Library and Learning Center. One point zero roll call.
Crum.
Here.
Here.
Chukin.
Here.
Zumba.
Here.
Stowe.
Here.
Gumber.
Here.
Note, all members are present in council chambers. Two point zero pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point zero approval of agenda.
Second.
Motion by Allen, second by Rich. Council discussion. Penny, please conduct the roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Chukin.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yeah.
Stowe.
Yes.
Gumber.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Motion to approve agenda carried unanimous. Four point zero motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings. Four point one, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Also discussion on the minutes that were submitted. Penny.
Chukin.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yeah.
Stowe.
Yes.
Gumber.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Five point zero public hearings, none. Six point zero proclamations, none. Seven point zero old business. Seven point one downtown facade project update. Derek Klumsman.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So hopefully this is the last time we don't have a lot to talk about regarding the facade project. We got a couple of nice teaser days with weather, but we should be starting the painting here. Hopefully any couple of days, still some door hardware to come in. But otherwise, those are our last major elements of the downtown facade project to be done by May first. So we'll be making sure we have all the final payments in over the next course, the next few weeks. We're doing our punchless walkthrough later this week. And then we'll have our final punch, our final walk through the week of May first. So hopefully on the May eighth meeting, I can either give you the update or wait till the end of May and hopefully we'll have all that updated and ready to go. The change order is a deduct from the project. One of the owner, new owners of vendor village had something that he didn't need that was in the original plan. And so instead of waiting another six months to get that piece, they decided to go without it. So that's what the deduct is for. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
It's all like there's.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Derek.
You need a motion?
Item one, review and approval of change order number twenty-two. Yes, I would.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Council discussion. Penny.
Zumba.
Yeah.
Stowe.
Yes.
Gumber.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Chukin.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Seven point two project status update from Snyder and Associates. Lindsay Beaman, Tim Wallace.
Hi. Um, guess I can go over the update. I do have some questions too on some of these things. Um, really low equalization based. And I know that Nick was going to be meeting with Steve to go over some equipment stuff. He's having trouble getting some equipment stuff from some of those suppliers. C D B G, are we still pursuing that? Okay, is that gonna make the next deadline?
July first.
Okay, okay, okay. That impacts some of what we do. Okay, um, the second street lift station base two, which is not none of those things, but the funny name, it was attached to that project ever since it started. Um, there was a meeting early March going through. What's on the plans, getting some comments from, I believe, a lot of them, I wasn't at the meeting, so I know that Tim and Nick, I believe, and you and the guys were all the meeting going through some of those markups. There's since been some coordination with origin design on the vision street bridge and stream bank repair work. I do know that Nick and Tim had a lengthy conversation with a designer over there about some of the overlap between the two projects. And they've been told they have to wait and talk to a different project manager at Origin, but there's a bunch of stuff there that would have been torn out on our project or vice versa other project had they've been overlapped. So there is some stuff, probably some suggestions from us that maybe some of the project work on our project might go to that project just because it makes sense from location and timing. That's something we need to work out with them and probably come back and let you know on that one. We know for sure. They want to change some sewer elevations and there was some, some maybe a hydrant that would be torn out later after it was put in that you, the guys wanted. So that, long story short, there's some overlap conversations happened between us and Origin to make sure that nobody's duplicating or removing anybody's constructed efforts. And report back to you later after we get more details from them on their project. Old Dubuque Road is still, that one is a quiet one for now. It's still out to bid April nineteenth. There are plan holders that have plans out. We can tell that by the D O T system. We can see who's got plans and specs out and available, looking at bidding it. I think that is all I had on the questions or my comments for the memo. The update. And I think we need to.
Council, have any questions for Lindsay on the update? Thanks, Lindsay, for the update. Item number one, review and approval of professional services agreement amendment for the highway one fifty-one grade separation. Old Dubuque Road extension.
I don't know if you guys have any questions. This is kind of a, we just threw this draft out there to Beth, actually before we even knew she was leaving, just to clean up the paperwork on this project because obviously we haven't done all of the project at once yet. We're trying to rectify some of the work that's been done because we're not sure what the future is for the next phases and whatnot. I mean, the whole thing's been kind of dissected further here into different projects. And so it actually is a deduct on the work just to make sure the contract reads for what the work we've been doing. Putting construction staking into it that wasn't there in the original contract. So otherwise, we were seeking just some feedback on this. I don't, I don't have it in a final format. I mean, something that you can sign unless you wanted to, I suppose. But yeah, I was just looking, I was throwing it out there just for a conversation. So you don't have to take action on it tonight. I wasn't expecting to put it in the council packet. I was more of a, yeah, going through the preliminary phases of. So question. Or take your time to look at it.
So is, is the frontage road staked out then? You, you said something about staking.
Oh, no, when, when this construction underway. No, we didn't do any extra staking. I know there was, we did. There's been some asks for some stakes, just for visualization. We did some stuff on our own just to keep people moving forward on the property owner standpoint. The construction staking is the staking that will occur while it's under construction. Yeah, so there's nothing going on that front. It'll be, it'll be a lot of staking. And timing, yeah, this, that is a huge deal because none of the construction wise starts until at least past April nineteenth at the five, like May, you know, May plus because it takes a month for the contract. So if you have time or want to wait for, you know, new administration, whatnot, to go through and let them get the speed of the stuff, it makes a difference.
So it goes out for bid on April nineteenth, or that's?
That is the day it is the D O T opens it.
Okay. Close some point after that.
Yep.
And has the city attorney reviewed this yet or?
No.
Okay.
Not that I've heard back yet.
So.
And so, um, project, so engineering wise, does this get the bridge engineering done?
No, we took that out of there because as far as today, we weren't sure the future of that, when that would take place, whatnot, we're just, we're just gonna leave it as is, like give you guys the building goals for everything we have.
So is the bridge so far in there? Like I, I was just looking at what was the traffic. Is that, that's not gonna be enough to do the bridge though.
You mean to finish the bridge?
Right. I mean, like the original was the seven hundred thousand was for the entire project.
Yeah.
And now we're at five. Just what we have so far.
June five sixteen.
Yeah, or does that include some of the bridge design?
That, no, that was taking, and that's what I was trying to summarize on the last page. I was taking everything that's not been done yet on the bridge back out because the bridge and the culvert really haven't had much except for the preliminary look at for making sure they line up with everything. So that was taking those back out. I mean, they could come, they can come back later. I'm not saying you don't have to do it. I just, it was all written as it would be one lump sum project, which also hasn't been. So at this point, to go through the plans and specs process again does take more effort on our part as well. It won't be double whatever, you know, the effort was, but it does. And it doesn't, it matters when it happens. If it doesn't happen this year for another few years, things change. The world changes, but I mean, as far as what's on the ground changes, the D O T may or may not be doing the things they keep talking about, so. Just trying to button it up and it happened to coincide with you leaving, which was actually what really good timing because it's hard to explain to new people what the thought of other people were and yeah. So making sure it's all clear. Obviously you inherited this one from someone else. So now that I say that.
I went back and looked through everything, so because I kind of wanted to know where we were at. So I did review the tapes from those initial meetings in June of twenty twenty. If anybody wants to review those, it kind of went through the project at that time and that's kind of when everything started.
Regarding item one, at this time, is the council at a place to approve or you would prefer to table? Sounds like Snyder is open for both.
Always open.
I mean, would it make sense in a construction wise, not doing it now, but to engineer the bridge now for a future or product?
Yes and no. I mean, there's, you know, disputing, we've had this conversation before you and I too on this, in this room about that. You know, sometimes it helps to have stuff shovel ready and be ready for funding agreements. Sometimes if things are gonna happen, you know, you're gonna have to rework effort later. Maybe if you want to pick it back up, it just depends on what the intent is. You know, another conversation that I don't know if we want to have here. I know there's been, and you know, meetings with the property owner out there that, that he has interest in building part of the original roadway through that west leg is what, you know, there's no street names, but that west leg. Picking up what had been left off of, you know, the preliminary design and taking it and going with it and paying for the design and the build of it. And so I mean, that is something too to be considered. I don't know if there's any agreements on that on the timing of that or any more conversations we had on that front.
No, not that I've had. Not just, um, I was more curious about like, um, if we just start with the original agreement, it had part of that leg design and then the bridge design. If, you know, if we can just continue on with our, as far as design and construction might be out farther, but price wise, it seems like it's better to do it together.
It, yeah, I would, I would probably ask for some money just because from doing a whole other bid packet, there's some just production efforts and putting the other plans and specs. But yeah, the design wise, I mean, yeah, we had intended to do the bridge and the, the culvert all at the same time as the rest of the project. So I mean, that was the intention. We would do that design for that amount.
Otherwise, you have an estimate, estimate of what it will be once it's separated. Like, is it going to be twice what we were at before? Because we were at seven hundred thousand.
That's pre pandemic too, wasn't it? I don't know, it's right, right around that. Yeah, I don't know. Um, I don't know if there's, I don't think we've done an updated estimate. You mean for engineering or for construction?
For engineering.
Oh, yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be very close, yeah.
Engineer and contract.
Yeah.
Took about one seventy-nine off of there.
Yeah.
And that's not really going to be enough even for the bridge at all.
No, but I, I'm not, no, all I mean, like, no, but a lot of the preliminary stuff is done. So yeah, that was the intended, yeah. I mean, you could pick up, yeah. So I mean, I kind of just like drew a line in the sand with what we'd done and say, we build this much, we've done this percentage of that, and here's what's left. And I'm not sure if you want to keep going or if you want to put a ten in it for two to five years or, yeah. It was, it was more of a conversation. Like, here's what we've got. What do you want to do with the future of this project? I, I think we're putting it. We should talk more about that. Okay.
You don't have to take that.
No, I just waited for some direction from the councils to what their preferences seem.
Well, the unfortunate part of this sounds like if we amend the contract, then we come back a year later or two years later, the bridge portion might be actually more. Yeah, if we delay that portion of it. So it would make sense from a fiscal standpoint to just leave it in place as is. Is my.
We would like to do the work, but yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to talk myself out of work there. We always want to do the work.
I mean, the other option is we amend it and then when it comes time to do the bridge work, we could open it up to bids again for the engineering of it and so forth, but I'd just soon leave it in place and go this route with.
Was that your motion, Rich?
I'll make a motion to leave the contract in place.
And we're one step closer in the future when we decide if we keep it in there, basically.
Was that a second?
That's a second.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Prove as submitted. Also discussion.
Not that it's submitted.
No, just.
Yes.
Leave as it is.
So you would not be doing the.
We would not alter the contracts.
Also discussion. Public comment. Please.
Stowe.
Yes.
Gumber.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Chukin.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yeah.
Motion carried unanimously. Item number two, resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, authorize and acceptance of real property for the highway one fifty-one grade separation. Old Dubuque Road extension.
The next two resolutions are just for the acceptance of the right of way and to get them reported. I will try and get them reported this week.
Move to approve.
Motion by Rich, second by Allen for the council discussion. Penny.
Gumber.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Smith.
Yeah.
Chukin.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yeah.
Stowe.
Yeah.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Item three, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty, authorizing easement agreements for the highway one fifty-one grade separation. Old Dubuque Road extension.
Second.
Was that motion by Kay? And second. Thanks. Motion by Kay, second by Jeff. For the council discussion.
I'm just curious, it's probably as to like those temporary easements, the east side, it's east side of the road as well as the west side of the road for the, for the temporary easements. I mean, the works primarily go off to the west there, but like the property owners on the east, they, we still need that temporary easement for those going along there, going up. Okay. I figured it was just standard to do all the.
Grade, they're still gonna be grading for the roadway installation, so they're still gonna be. I mean, they're not gonna contain it to just the road, so they're still gonna be, it's not gonna be anything major.
The other comments? Penny.
Crum.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Chukin.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yeah.
Stowe.
Yes.
Gumber.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Lindsay, thanks for attending this evening. Seven point three project status update from H R Green, Andrew Marsh, Josh Dean, Jeremy Hammer. I was probably as surprised as you are.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Marsh. I work for H R Green in Cedar Rapids. With me is Jeremy from H R Green as well in Cedar Rapids. We have a, an update for everyone on our various project status that's in your packet this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. We have a number of items on agenda after the update, so I can take those one at a time if you like. But as for the product updates, the Sycamore Street project, the contractor is underway in terms of his contract is all executed and insurance is in place. So we're ready to get started on construction there. The well six project, you all approved that contractor change were at the last previous council meeting. And so they are in the process of scheduling that well acid treatment. The well seven sighting study. We are awaiting, talking to the school district about the proposed location of that future well. The Booth Street project, we have met with the city staff and gathered comments and we're going to be submitting final plans here within the next couple of days. The disinfection alternatives analysis, we have submitted a draft report here within the last couple of weeks. And we do have a meeting scheduled with city staff later this week to go over that draft report and get comments and answer any questions before that gets finalized. The pre-treatment agreement with the state pen, there is we have gathered a few more months of collecting data on their flow and loading. And we have proposed a response both to the D N R and to the A S P for how to proceed forward. Basically, they've stopped their manufacturing process. And so that removes them from the categorical limits of their wastewater discharge. So we would just be monitoring and permitting on everything but the categorical limits like for metals and stuff like that, since they've stopped their manufacturing process. So the agreement between the city and the A S P will look a little bit different moving forward. And with that, I'd open it up to any questions on our update. Yeah, sure. You bet. I can elaborate on that. You bet. So maybe a month or two ago, city staff and I met with a couple of representatives from the state pen. And they informed us that they are stopping much, if not all of their manufacturing processes. And so a couple of their manufacturing processes at the pen had wastewater categorical limits. So if you work on, say, sign making or anything with metals, then they would have discharge limits on their metals that we would sample and test for. And so now that they have stopped that manufacturing process, we can remove those metals limits from their agreement and just sample on flow and loading for the normal wastewater flow and loading fees. Hope that makes sense. Okay, good.
Was there other manufacturing that could impact this or it's so minimal that it's just?
There were a few different, I forget what all they were producing over there, but they had just informed us that they were stopping all of the manufacturing. I think there was other, I can't remember them all.
Metal shop and the woodworking shop.
The woodwork, that was the one. Thank you.
Had the what we needed the monitor for.
Right.
I think the sign shop is not really.
Using water.
Yeah.
Dry process.
Water, it's more dry. And then they're doing their cleaning products that wouldn't have the metals either.
Right.
Questions? For H R Green on the status update. Item number one, review and approval of professional services agreement amendment for the Sycamore Street project.
So I, I talked Jeremy into accompanying me this evening because he's our resident expert on the next three items. So I'll turn it over to Jeremy.
So that first item for Sycamore Street is an amendment to, for additional services related to construction observation and onsite inspection. So while the contractor's out there building it, we want to make sure that they're building it correctly. We had some administration already in the contract, so we're just adding that little bit extra for that onsite person. We already had the pre-construction meeting this past week and I think everybody's on the same page about that. But any questions about that one?
Well, I do have one question. I think, I think I'm on the right one here anyway. The adjustment. It says current, per current rate schedule with a maximum fee to be increased by thirty-three thousand five hundred. But then in parentheses, you've got thirty-two thousand five hundred.
It probably was.
So should it be the thirty-three or the thirty-two?
I can review that.
I'm, if I'm on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I'm on, if I'm on the right page, anyway, I'm just. I just want to make sure we're on the same page on that.
I think it is the thirty-two.
Okay.
I can, I can confirm.
What was the, what was the total of the increase do you recall? It's a full thirty-two or thirty-three above what was previous?
Yes.
Okay. Touch, you touched on it, but I mean, specifics as far as what's increasing that by the thirty-two thousand, you said some inspections. I mean, it's.
Sure.
You library a little bit.
So for basically the entire length of time that contractors out there building it, we are going to be sending somebody out to monitor what they're constructing, inspecting their staking, testing their materials. And we have that in at about sixteen hours a week through the length of the contract. Contractor says they're gonna start January first. So we're only having from January first to September ninth, but so for every weekend there, we're there for either two full days or four half days, whatever works with their schedule. But we're having somebody out there sixteen hours a week. You know, monitoring the contractor's progress. That's also gonna be, you know, helping prepare pay estimates and all that stuff, but mostly it's for Jeff to get up here and be, you know, monitoring the contractor, making sure it gets built right.
Can you explain a little bit more? Was this an oversight or?
Actually.
Thirty-two thousand five hundred or thirty-three five was, to me is a significant increase.
It is.
So the. To have been here, sorry. So as for the typo, I think we can honor the lower price that we just mentioned. But as for why we're coming to you now, we had only provided the design documents up to and including the bidding phase. And then we hadn't included the construction observation that Jeremy's describing. So all of the work to date mayor has been on the design and the bidding services. So this is to extend our contract through construction.
Which is very complex a lot of times because it doesn't always get built immediately after it's been designed. So we'll sometimes separate those, and also the original contract was for an overlay with ADA work, which would have required less oversight, but now that it's become with sanitary sewer replacements and it's turned into a reconstruction project, it requires a little bit more oversight than the original contract would have done. So had it been an overlay, it would be a much smaller, uh, price, but um, and often ADA work in particular requires a lot of oversight because of the regulatory requirements that come with that, making sure that it is compliant with the American Disabilities Act. And so if there's a lot of tables to fill out to make sure that it all works out nicely, and that is a lot of detail work. And so, um, you know, I've talked to some of our construction guys. Uh, I think we did a project down in Solon where the construction observation costs more than the entire design just because it took so long to get through all of the sidewalks.
Thanks, fair enough.
So if I'm following this correctly, then did we change the scope of this by adding the sanitary sewer after the original contract was put in place?
Yes, there was already one amendment prior to this.
Okay.
We had that several months ago, Rich, when we were in design, after the city staff televised that structure centers sewer and found that it was, uh, in construction, so that was added.
So that's part of this.
That's already taken care of.
That's already taken care of, okay.
And already part of the contract.
Is there a motion?
I'm not sure we really have much of a choice. I'll move to approve.
Rich, would you just please in your motion note that the motions for the thirty-two five or the thirty-three five?
For the thirty-two five.
Thank you. Motion by Rich, second by Alan, further counsel discussion. Public comment? Any?
Smith?
Yes.
Tukin?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Dumber?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Item number two, review and approval of professional services agreement for Animosa Third Street Sidewalk Extension.
So this one was a project that we discussed with, uh, Beth and Shane about extending sidewalk um, from over by the school across to where the hospital and, um, such as over there, right to that connection across the highway is kind of being a desirable area to get people, you know, accessible via non-motorized traffic. So new design contract will take this through, and I believe there is some, uh, wording in there for finding some funding assistance related to safe routes to school, C D B G, et cetera.
And hopefully removing the I three eighty comment.
I just, I just had a question, and maybe it's too early since this is, this is the early phases agreement, but as far as it talks about Shaw Road and ultimately like the hospital area, is there gonna be like the thought to have some somehow crossover? I mean, to get like the school and the parks and stuff, or is it gonna be continuously thought to be on one side of the road, or is it?
Well, we talked about that, so kind of depends on, um, which way the design goes and how the D O T reacts to whether or not they're gonna let you cross underneath of one fifty-one as a walkway. Um, we did have briefly talked about if you could go under one fifty-one. Over would probably be quite a bit more prohibitive cost-wise, but, but yeah, that was, that was it. We talked about sidewalks a bit.
Yeah.
Budget time.
Yeah, because it starts nicely at Shaw Road, you, but then you think you, down the way, you'd like to get across a couple of different points.
So yeah, we talked about going from the fire station to Font Creek. Um, since a lot of kids would come from Font Creek to go to Strawberry Hill or
Yeah.
Um, and someone mentioned that they were using the culvert to go across under there by your place. Yeah. So I thought, okay, so.
That'd be, that'd be my only comment is to look hard at the, you know, option of getting not only on the south, but good, good options to, you know, particularly like when you get to the, the areas by the school and then well, then you have like the by the Tyson McDonald, then you have Font Creek, which is all on the other side of the road, so.
Not just east to west, but also.
East to west, yeah, it'd be more so the navigating from across the road.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Concept hasn't been pinned down yet, and there is some public engagement in there as well so that we can figure out what those destinations are that people are trying to get to, or where are they coming from? And so during that public engagement period, we'll take stuff like that into consideration and make sure that we can make those connections along with this project.
Figures probably early. I was just, I was just thinking about it, so I'll just throw it out there.
Yes, so this project would have to go through the D O T right of way in order to get across the highway, be it under, over, using the existing, uh, right of way that's kind of under, in, under the bridge, or if there's an opportunity to tunnel or something, it really is up to the D O T on how they want to handle those types of things. I think we would really like it to be a surface crossing under the bridge, because that's going to be the most affordable option, but D O T has their mysterious ways about what they'll allow in certain cases, and I've seen them be very big sticklers about having kids walking across highway ramps and such. And so they might ask for some alternatives, and so again, we've got D O T coordination built into the contract.
Well, no, I thought, I think that's early, but you could, you could go at that stoplight, utilize that, and possibly have like a button to crosswalk there, control traffic.
Yep, and we got time for our traffic team in there to analyze that.
More discussion to go.
My understanding, the reading this, that, uh, this agreement, the total is nineteen-nine? It's what I see listed in seven point five.
I know, I should have, but yeah, I.
Uh, then.
It's the underlying number.
If this is approved, when would you start? Whatever. First phase or first step is necessary.
Yeah.
Right away.
We'd be setting up a kickoff meeting within, you know, one to two weeks.
So best case scenario, construction wouldn't happen probably till next year.
Probably not. Especially with that D O T coordination.
Depending on the funding, we will attract to that, take a big, play a big part in the bidding.
Yeah, I think many of the funding sources that we would be considering for this are usually due by October first. So that's kind of our big milestone in there is have enough of the concept laid out and the coordination done by then that we can still, you know, right, start shopping around for some money.
Move to approve.
Same.
Motion by Kay, second by Jeff, some discussion. Public comment? Any?
Tukin?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yeah.
Snow?
Yes.
Dumber?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Item three, review and approval of professional services and agreement for Animosa twenty-twenty-two sidewalk program.
So this one came out of, a related discussion to the Third Street. That was one specific concrete project that we could help address for connectivity in the community. The sidewalk program at large is really about, um, maintaining that ADA compliance throughout the city and coming up with a plan of attack. It's kind of an overwhelming thing to have to address every bit of sidewalk and every ramp in the city. And so being able to chunk that up and help give you, you know, a budgetary item to plan towards. And then, you know, also helping set some policy and ordinances so that you can have standards so that when you come to a property owner and say, this sidewalk isn't compliant, either you can fix it, or we can assess you to fix it ourselves, you know, why are you picking that sidewalk? And the answer would be, oh, because it's got a half an inch lift between the panels or, uh, two thirds of your panels are cracked or something. You know, having those numbers put down officially so that you have something defensible.
So if I could jump in, excuse me, the, um, the Sycamore Street project initially started because of some pretty obvious problems with the sidewalk and the stair and the handrail at that intersection that were very obviously not ADA compliant and trying to start with one of the higher priority sidewalks in the city, and I think this approach that Jeremy is offering will have at the end of it, a pretty good, uh, prioritized plan for the rest of the community to, uh, not do it all at once, but eventually to get everything in compliance.
There's a high priority ramp right there. Doesn't have any detectable warnings.
Well, is this something that our code enforcement officer could be a part of?
Yes.
So if he, depending on how much he's a part of this, could this be come down?
This is already assuming the inspection is being done by that code enforcement officer. We are helping put it together, policy and ordinances, the mailings, the, uh, implementation plan, the budgetary items, you know, so that we can project out several years in the future how much it costs to run the sidewalk program. So this is mostly the administrative side of putting together the program. With the intent that down the line, we could maybe do some more sidewalk ramp design or put together bid packages to do the assessed sidewalk portions. This is just the implementation step.
When you, when you say, sorry, I was just gonna say, when you say mailings, are you talking about mailings to like property owners or?
Yes, so typically how it's done is after you inspected an area of your city, you found all the deficient sidewalks that have issues that need to be addressed. You would then send out an official letter, certified mail to each of the property owners that are affected by the deficient sidewalk. They would be given a certain period of time to respond that by either fixing it themselves, paying a contractor to fix it, or saying that, no, I choose not to fix it myself, at which point the city would probably fix it for them and then assess them that cost. But so you need to send an official letter, track who's actually done it, and then follow through on that. And so that's part of, we're trying to help put together the mechanisms to do all of that.
And like you had that, the price in there for the contract, but obviously there's so many sidewalks, it's not gonna be handled in a year, so does that cover us for, you know, the, however long it takes to identify all of it, takes a few years or is that the thought?
So this contract is for getting this program started so that the code enforcement officer can take off and start doing it, and we can provide support throughout that. But the idea is that we would do one implementation plan, kind of coming in blind, doing it the best that we can. But then after one year of the code enforcement officer going out, seeing how bad it is in reality, how many ramps need to be redone, how many property owners we need to descend letters to. Um, we would then give a revised implementation plan now that we have some real data and saw how it went that first year, and then I'd be scaling it back, ramping it up, so it's really just one year's worth of services, but with a, you know, a revised version at the end of it, so, and if we like where it's going, we can renew. And it will be hopefully cheaper the second time around because, you know, we've already set up the forms, already got the G I S database going. We've already got the policy and stuff in place. It's really just, you know, the letters and tracking compliance at that point.
Which I would think letters and tracking we could do internally.
Yeah.
Without paying you extra for that.
And we can provide you the resources we create as part of this process.
Yeah.
Well, and when you talk about policy, you develop the policy or the council develops policy?
We would propose doing some joint work sessions together so that we can bring engineering expertise and, you know, former public works, people that work with H R Green to come up with some suggestions, but eventually it's going to be the council that decides on what the standard is for sidewalk in the community.
And we can give you a sample of the ordinance for you to review or approve.
I guess I personally would like to have a discussion with the code enforcement officer at some point. Know what they're capable of maybe doing out of this. And see if we can't scale this thing back.
Well, it's one thing to be ADA compliant at the curbs, it's another thing to have icky sidewalks between the
Right.
At the, so I think we have more work to do than this.
And, and just my personal, I mean, I know the ADA compliance is important, but I think the bigger thing is just like the regular sidewalk portion is in bad shape and, you know, that's I feel like that's more, even more of a problem than the, than the ramps. You know, you gotta address both, but you had to prioritize, I feel like just the regular sidewalks are a bigger problem.
I agree.
Yeah, that, and we've got some really bad sidewalks in town. But I really would like to, I guess, give that person, the code enforcement person a chance to get his feet on the ground, see what he, what he feels comfortable with before we enter into this. So maybe we can sit here and negotiate a little bit more. So maybe we'll, if that's all right, so. I mean, we've got something to start with. He's gonna be the one who can go out and review all sidewalks and write the letters and make sure they get done and, and so forth. That maybe there's a portion here for some consulting work if we need it, but let's find out first what our guy's capable of. That's, that's just my opinion of it.
Do you see programs like this, uh, being implemented in communities smaller scale than ten thousand population?
Yes, most communities have some form of sidewalk compliance program in place. And the, the hard part is following through with it and being actionable. It's one thing to have it, you know, on the books, but then you actually have to go out and look at the sidewalks, send the letters, you gotta assess it, and then you have to put together the bid packages, and what I find is that many communities just don't do that part. Um, you know, Cedar Rapids, for example, you know, came down with a judgment from the Department of Justice because they hadn't been doing it for like a decade. Um, and all of their sidewalks were bad. They didn't have ADA compliant ramps anywhere. And it was a big liability for them, and, you know, as a big community that should have resources for it. And so for smaller communities, it's harder to find that time and effort to actually follow through on these things. And so we just wanted to help set you up for success from the get-go.
Motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kate, table. The 2022 sidewalk program services with HR Green at this time. Further council discussion. Penny?
Zumba?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to table carried unanimously. Item number four. Review and approval of professional services agreement for sewer replacement between Ford Street and North Huber Street from Webster Street to north of Main Street.
So the last item on the agenda pertaining to HR Green that I can speak to is a, we were contacted by Steve a couple of weeks ago because of some ongoing cleaning and televising work in the area to what, to help with the engineering for the design and permitting associated with the sanitary sewer replacement. As you said, in the alleyway between Ford and Huber, south of Webster and north of Maine. So we prepared a proposal for your consideration for that. We're not sure at this time if that would be using pipe bursting or just removal of the sanitary sewer because we haven't started yet. But since it's down an alleyway, it's kind of limited access and a tight construction corridor. So both of those are still considered on the table. And I don't know if any of the city staff want to speak to that, but we just provided a proposal for your consideration for that. Sanitary sewer replacement for the design and permitting.
Approval tonight would be for phase one and phase two of this proposal.
Exactly right, yes.
Would this, I assume this would include the property down there that runs along the church and the lumbre or the parking lot, that, that's part of it?
Does kind of take a dog leg through that property? Yes, correct.
Will it stay in the same location or will it be moved, moved, moved out or roughly the same location?
We have, one of our initial tasks is to look at where your existing easement is relative to the existing pipe. So I guess the short answer is I don't know the answer to that question yet. We'll, we'll have to get into it. And I think also the construction means we'll have to play into that because if we're able to burst the pipe to get to the larger pipe size that we want, then we would just keep it where it is currently.
Currently it's a two-inch line, which isn't, we can't put a camera down it. We have three houses that are piggybacked together. We believe that we can't camera it, so we don't know. So our plan was to punch a hole in it so we could get a small camera up the line to see where those services come in, but there are two, at least two houses on that line that are in serious trouble and have been for some time. So it's not necessarily a, we'll just patch it up and go. It's something needs to be done because we've got several people that aren't going to have sewer service if it's not fixed.
Is it believed that it's a two-inch main? The whole of this?
As far as we can tell, it's two inches through the whole section. At least the part through the lumbre yard we know.
That bottom section, is it?
The one that goes from Cedar Street, is it Cedar? Yeah. So top parts four, bottom parts two, the people that are on the two-inch line are where we have problems. And we'll probably need to do an emergency repair with them and do something payment-wise for their service because they are going to need to be separated.
So it's your recommendation we do this?
It is very much so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Alan. Further council discussion. Penny, please.
Stout?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kiffin?
Yes.
Zumba?
Motion to approve carried unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
Andrew, Jeremy, thanks for being attendance and presenting. Seven point four, resolution approving the appointment of interim city administrator clerk and sending interim salary. Motion by Kay, second by Alan.
Did we have a meeting about this that I'm unaware of?
No, I would have sent you out the interest letter.
Okay, did we have any other applicants?
We did not advertise externally for an interim. We have an internal standard that that has gone to, to service interim.
I think this needed to be done behind a closed session.
As far as?
As far as all of this, I have not seen a resume or anything.
His resume is on file at City Hall. I didn't hear back from anyone asking for anything else prior to the meeting.
I just think the process is not the correct way. That has nothing to do with the applicant. Yes. I just had a question about that. And then also I was mentioned to me that Rich had mentioned that we're not going to be using a firm for the hiring process.
That's later on the agenda.
When did I say that?
I was told that by another community member today.
I would like to stay on point with not trying to silence you here, but seven point four is approving the appointment of the interim city administrator. Any other next steps in that process, I think are covered a little further down.
Yeah, I know. As opposed to the applicant, I just, the process, I guess, as far as if there's any other interested people or at least advertising, just to cover our bases, I guess. It's already more working only, used to have a clerk and administrator, and then you've been doing the work of both them, but to add police chief and clerk, and that's a pretty daunting task. Three positions under one person.
The council discussion questions, comments?
I think that any gap that we have in leadership is going to impact the fire station, the police station, the, all of the projects that we have underway because if we spend two weeks advertising, another two weeks getting applicants, we're a month down the road. What happens to the fire station, the police station, and all the projects we have going? Then if we can get an interim that can work on these projects and keep them going, then we can spend our time looking for, finding out the service that we want to use to get the next city administrator.
I, I just don't feel like it went through the correct process. It has nothing to do with the applicant. Well, yeah, I would think that we would have a discussion about this before we do this in public.
Well, I can tell you that when Al Johnson left, this is basically the process that was used to place Tammy into the interim position. When Jacob left, this is basically the process that was used to put Beth into the interim. Somebody within the organization who knew the projects and could keep things running. There was no interview process going out and looking at other individuals. So it's, it's been used since I've been on council at least twice. I know Rod was here on council and it was used when he was sitting in these chairs. So, I mean, it's, it's been done before.
I, I, I understand that.
I mean, maybe that's not to say it can't change, but that's what we've done in the past.
It's only an interim appointment. It's not a hiring. You're not hiring someone necessarily from the outside to your interim. In the interim, you're appointing this person, keeping things going, or to have everyone to have someone to answer to.
And I understand that also. I just don't. Well, I think we maybe should have put that out when you put your resignation in. Should have maybe advertised, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Advertise for an interim position?
Advertise for, he's gonna have to move, the next guy's gonna have to move, but we're gonna be short somewhere, somewhere. Somebody's gonna be short.
We have a little bit different situation now because we do have two other people at City Hall. We've been running with three. So that's not exactly, you're not short-staffed there. I mean, the interim person does have two people while I only have one. So that makes quite a bit of a difference as far as the workload goes. That's why the next item on the agenda is to internally place someone at the police station to take the day-to-day responsibilities of that.
Any further discussion, comments, questions from council?
Would the two at City Hall that are helping me right now be able to do the work?
As far as like the city administrator?
The leadership, yeah.
Um, that would be you again with only three people there. You'd have to point one of them in for me. One of them's only been here, what, a month?
Well, and we sort of need a place where Buck stops, somebody to make the decision.
Choose to go to person.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you can make it a lot longer process if you want to. That's fine. You're just gonna have to decide who's reporting to who because I'm leaving. And somebody else needs to put together the packets for the next meeting and those things you're going to have to decide on that. This is, this is it. This is the last meeting I'll be at.
Council, I don't want to cut you short on discussions. I'm gonna ask again, is there any more discussion, question or comments? On seven point four, we have a motion and a second on the floor that will require going to vote. Hearing none. Penny, please conduct the roll.
We will start with Zumba?
Yeah.
Tukin?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gomber?
No.
Stout?
No.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I do not hear you.
No.
So we have a split, three in favor, three opposed. The motion dies for lack of majority. Is there another motion warranted?
Motion paid with.
So who's in charge?
Yes, we are.
So when you say table it, table it until when?
Until we have, table it until we have time to discuss it in a closed session.
So we could have a closed session after meeting tonight?
We don't have it on the agenda.
So it'll be two weeks and before we can do anything.
Unless we have a special meeting.
Call a special meeting.
That'll be fine. I can make a motion to a special meeting.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I think only you can do. Motion to.
You don't need to do anything else at this point. You can call a special meeting. You can let me know tomorrow when we're going to do that.
I, I just did not go to public discussion. I figured this was a council decision. I, I, yes, you're right, Nancy. I did. This one I did not. I don't intend to go back to it at this time. I mean, you can, you can not like that idea and you can attempt to sit in this chair in the future. We, it is not required, that I'm aware of, that public discussion needs to occur on every agenda. Seven point five, resolution approving the appointment of interim police lieutenant and sending interim salary. Motion by Alan.
Second.
Second by Kay. Council discussion.
I guess for this one, the way I look at it is there's, until we know what's going on with the previous item. This would.
I was gonna ask Chief Hoyt if he would come. I was gonna ask Chief Hoyt if he would come to the podium because I do have, I would have a question, please.
I just thought it would make us prepared if anything ever happened.
Is, is seven point five a stated with the interim police lieutenant? The only reason would be to fill somewhat of a vacated position by you taking a dual role.
That's correct.
So being the decision wasn't made in seven point four, I would assume that seven point five doesn't need any action at this time.
Well, it's for the council to decide, but as was in the proposal, I think the intent was clear. So that's, that's for you guys to each make a decision on.
The only reason I'm inquiring was for full clarification for council to
Sure.
make a decision. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Further discussion? Counsel? Question? Comments?
Well, like I said, since seven point four failed, I'm okay just tabling this really, in essence, until we decide on seven point four and they could be on the same agenda at that special meeting. But I know, I know you've got a first and a second as is, so.
Any other question, comment? Helen, I guess I'll ask you, do you wish for your motion to remain? Okay, you second. Do you wish for your second to remain?
So is this, if it, if we go to a vote, is this contingent on seven point four passing then? Or is it step into place now?
Because Rich, my understanding would be that a majority of, for approval, means that the interim police lieutenant would be the individual. It would be a position occupied by the individualist.
Well, I, I got that, but would that occur immediately? Or would it be contingent on seven point four passing at a future date?
If you pass it, it's immediately.
I do not hear.
Unless you wanna amend your motion and second to have a contingent. Otherwise, it passes as it is.
I just want clarification.
We're, we're basically creating this position tonight.
So the way I read this, he would be lieutenant until a new city administrator is hired. So I'm going to assume that means until a new permanent is hired. Okay.
I believe by approving this motion, we would be creating a position that is not necessary at this time.
Well, have we not had a lieutenant in the past? I mean, I know probably since you've been around, we haven't, but in the existence.
It's, it's just one that hasn't been filled.
Okay. That's correct. It's a suspended position, so it's on the roster, but has not been filled for a long time. Okay.
As you didn't feel it was necessary to fill un- until contingent that you would assume the city interim city administrator role.
I feel it's important at a future date to, which is the reason why I retained it in the policies for the Anamosa Police Department. But yes, this was, the idea behind this was the increased workload that would come about with this position change. I felt it was necessary to bring about this position and reinstate it.
And understandably so, yes. Counsel, I'm gonna call this the vote. I wanna make sure you understand what a yes and no vote is for. No one else asking for clarification? Penny, would you conduct the roll?
Yes, we will start with Smith.
Yes.
Tukin?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yeah.
Stout?
As I see it, they're together. So at this, at this point in time, I would say no.
Gomber?
No.
Yes.
We have four yes votes, two nays. The motion carries by majority. Seven point six, discussion of possible action, city administrator clerk search, presentation from Midwest Municipal Consulting LLC, Elizabeth Hansen. Written proposals from last meeting's presentations from next move group and Henson Consulting LLC.
Good evening, Mary and counsel, Elizabeth Hansen, Midwest Municipal Consulting. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. It sounds like you need a consultant to help you out through this process. No joke, really. Elizabeth Hansen, I've been a city administrator for almost nineteen years. I've done all of my work in Iowa and in the upper Midwest, of course. Your packet, you've received a profile which gives you some feedback and some background of, of my search firm. I incorporated in two thousand sixteen and kind of going through there, just this last year, I have done ten searches, including police chiefs and public, excuse me, park and rec director position. And currently, I'm doing the search for Dennison, which I included that in your packet as well. In addition, of course, we do strategic planning and I have a number of contracts going right now for that work as well. So in your packet, you probably, it's my understanding that you received this and this was the only proposal you received in the last meeting packet. So unfortunately, it's pretty easy for competitors to duplicate that or even undercut my services. But with that said, it is very similar as far as the scope of services that I provide. The only difference, I guess, I would say that stands me out from the rest is my connections that I have with city managers and city clerks across the state. Very active in the Iowa City Managers Association and also I am FOA. I attend the spring and fall conferences. I'm also a speaker at those events. I was just a speaker at the Iowa League of Cities Conference in September and the previous Iowa City Managers Conference last spring. So I stay in front of city managers and clerks to find out where their career development is. And I have an extensive list of those candidates that are interested in, in this, in this type of position. So with that, like I said, it, it helps in the recruitment process. It helps to, as a city manager or former city administrator, it helps me to be able to identify and to understand the work that you do, the work that the city clerks and city managers do as well. So like I said, in my proposal, you can see an extensive list of references. And it seems like without being able to, while I'm kind of playing tag with Beth, since I was out of the country last week, that, or excuse me, the former week, that, that the timeline does meet the needs of your organization. So if there are any questions about any of that, I would be happy to answer.
Questions, comments for Ms. Hansen?
Do you have a complete list of your recent searches?
Um, yeah, the, it's on page four of my proposal and Dennison, of course. Oh, yeah, Dennison is on there as well. So I did have that updated.
So I, I see you got Dennis and then quite a few in twenty twenty-one. What are you, what are you finding for, I guess, the pool of candidates?
Um, well, with the, quite honestly, I mean, depending on how you advertise the position, I've seen, I've had upwards of forty-five applications. Dennison has ten, ten, ten candidates that, that was just due on Friday. And the difference, I would say, in those is that it depends on how you advertise it as far as where you advertise it. And then also the, how do I wanna say, the qualifications. So looking for somebody with administration specifically lower that pool, okay? If you're gonna put it on Indeed, you can get forty, fifty percent of them checking that unemployment box. So you're just not gonna potentially have the number of good candidates in that type of scenario, especially if you're looking for somebody who just with a, maybe a high school diploma, maybe an associate's degree. I think your size community is gonna look for somebody that has a mixture of education and it's gonna be very important that they have municipal background experience. So yours would be somewhere in the middle of that. What I'm seeing, especially with the, the way local government, state government, federal government, and the issues that cities are seeing, there are candidates that might be a police chief that is looking for, like they're retiring in their system and they might be applying for a similar skill set position such as a city administrator, city manager. I'm seeing city clerks that have, you know, been a senior city clerk for, you know, say anywhere between ten, ten, fifteen years that are looking for that career advancement position. So that's where they may be applying. And I do recruit city clerks, knowing those that are out there that, that are interested in making that next move or are looking for a change in location, getting somewhere closer to their family. So there's, there's those scenarios as well. And then, of course, any city manager, I've got a list of those that are looking for advancement as well.
Tell me about the range of education background that the Dennison applicants have.
Oh, uh, well, just one moment for a second. I've actually got the binders. I'm going there in two days. So let me grab that real quick here for you. So right now, I mean, I have a couple that are attorneys. So I have two that have Juris Doctorate degrees and I have one that has a high school diploma. And the one that has a bachelor's degree and the others are, have a master's in business or a master's of public administration. Thank you. You're welcome.
So it sounds like the pool might be small, but the quality might be pretty good.
Well, to, to answer your question on that, if you went to my proposal on page three, I kind of described where I would come to your community and do an interview. And really what that is, is it's an entire day. I meet with anywhere between fifteen to twenty-five of your community members, elected officials and staff members, and really get a feel for what it is that you are looking for in your next city administrator. It's so important to me and to you to get that information from your community leaders, not only just to, not only for the position, but it also is a communication on, here's the process, this is where we're going. And then you have those twenty-plus people engaged in the process. And a lot of times, those are the folks that end up being on an interview panel. So I, I keep them kind of engaged throughout that process. And at the end, then they're all there to see it through. So it's very important to identify what are your goals that you're looking for moving forward and having this person do. That, that puts, I put together then that profile that you saw in the, in the packet that I did for Dennison. So that is their piece. That is the information they provided me. I worked on that to be able to advertise the position. And then for, for those candidates that are looking at that, they can say, oh, well, your goal is to do a recreation center. I've got experience in that and I think I'd be a good candidate that I could help you through that process in your community. So it's not only a piece that talks about the position, but it also is a, is a recruitment tool to look at your community and showcase your community for what uniqueness it has.
Any other questions? Great, none. Thank you, Elizabeth, for being with us this evening to, over your proposal.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
Is there anyone from next move on that was?
But they were here last.
They were going to tune back in tonight. Henson Consulting. I didn't know if the council did. But Henson Brett was on earlier. All right. Eight point zero, new business. We'll be back up. Is there any action on seven point six?
If Brent's online, is he anything to add? If he's online, is he anything to add? Since he put together his proposal since last time.
Until Brent is on or not. Yes, the council has questions for him. Good evening, Brett. Can you hear us?
Yes, yep, thank you. I was not able to unmute there, so I was just frantically waving my arms while not, I only did that once, I guess.
All right, sorry about that.
No, it's, 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 it's all fine and good. Yeah, so just wanted to, you know, follow up. As you guys requested at the last meeting, I provided you a proposal kind of with what we were thinking. Now, obviously, the situation has been fluid, kind of continues to be fluid. So I did provide Beth with a little follow-up on Friday afternoon when we became aware that there was a possibility of an internal interim entering into this process. So I did provide her kind of with what it would look like if we just, you know, worked with that internal interim and worked into a, a full city administrator search. Certainly, we're here as a resource to, to help however we can. I will tell you that, that I do think, you know, from our perspective, you know, when we heard that you had the potential of an internal interim, that that tends to be a really good move for a city to take to help, you know, obviously, it's more work for everybody, but to be But to be able to keep things going and have some of that knowledge rather than bringing in an outside person. At the time we put, put together our proposal on interim, getting, getting you guys an interim. We were not aware that would be a possibility. We do think that that's, you know, could be a very reasonable move to make. To, you know, just be able to keep your house in order and keep the projects going while you, you know, kind of. Get everybody on the same page as far as what you're looking for, a, a permanent replacement. So that would be my, my two cents. Again, we're here, we're available to help in whatever way we can, answer any questions. And, uh, you know, just generally help get you guys where you need to go.
Council, do you have any questions, comments for Brett? Well, Brett, thank you for joining with us this evening.
Absolutely. And just, just let me know if this is something that, you know, clearly, it sounds like you guys are probably headed for a special meeting. In the near future, if you, if you need me to join for that or, or help in any way, just, just let me know. Happy to help.
Thank you. Also, you have it. Three to choose from. If that's the route you decided to go or would prefer.
Well, I think long-term, we need to hire a consulting company. Unlike what Brooke was saying, I, I am in favor of moving forward. So I don't know where he got his information from, but it was.
Glad to hear that.
But with that being said too, I know I'm trying to find it, but I thought Henson said something about delaying. Three or four months in the process, but I'm going to make a motion to hire Midwest Municipal Consulting LLC.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Council discussion.
We'll wait until we have to have our special meeting, put this on that agenda afterwards.
Why, we're, that special meeting's just for the interim. This is for starting the process for the firm. Yeah. Yeah, I, the, to me, those two items are separate.
Yeah.
Beth, when? When we have our special flows meeting, can we actually come out of it and name a city interim? We can or would have to wait to the following council.
As long as it's on the agenda.
Thanks. Well, I'm going to go ahead and. See if the public has any comment to make on this. No, I, please state your name, your as, your resident address. And direct questions, comments to the council regarding seven point six. Please.
Nancy Schaefer, eight oh three North Division Court, Anamosa. I, I seem to remember at the last council meeting that the Henson Consulting was not interested. In doing anything. Other than providing interim. And I think the question was directly asked by Councilman Smith. Would they help with hiring a city administrator? They stated they were only interested in doing the interim. I think. I kind of liken it to when you are building a building and you go out for bids and you have this. Twelve noon to submit your bid and then they're opened. I think they have done a roundabout, Henson has, coming in the way they did tonight. I think when the motion was made by Crump to find two firms, preferably three. But at least two, I think you found your two firms with Midwest and. Who's the other one?
Next move.
Right, not Henson. They took themselves out of the game. So I hope you don't consider them. Thank you.
Tom Durgen, downtown property owner. Nancy kind of hit on some of that stuff I was going to say about Henson. I believe Kay had asked. If I understand correctly, that he was not interested in you. I believe you had asked that question and didn't get an answer. Rod, you said that you had reached out to talk to him and don't know the conversation. But then evidently, he came in and he wanted to be a consultant. I guess one of my concerns is, is, and, and maybe not so much a concern, but maybe a suggestion that if you're going to talk to any of these companies. I don't think it should be one person, two, it should be the group. Then there's no, he said, she said stuff, everybody knows what's going on. You should not be talking to these people directly by themselves.
That is really not for. I just don't see where you need to be making that suggestion. It, all it was, was just a general.
I, I, I understand it, Rod. I, I just said, and I know you just, you reached out to talk to him. But I, I have a, I, and I'm, I'm glad that Rich said what he said, you know, the company's going to go with. But I just find it odd that somebody would want to come in and then, or not come in, then come in. But. And I'm not by any means saying anything, I, I just, I, it's a concern and it's not anybody.
I think you are. So is, do you have any other, do you have any other business with?
Take it how you want, Rod, but that's fine.
But maybe there was inside stuff going on.
You need to be very careful with making unfounded accusations like that. Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Further council discussion. Penny, please.
We'll start with Ticken.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yeah.
Stowe.
Yes.
Gumberg.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
And Smith.
Yeah.
Motion to move forward Midwest Municipal Consulting LLC carried unanimously. Eight point zero, new business. Eight point one, introduction of Aaron Rush, library director.
Hello, so I'm Erin Rush. I'm the new library director. I started March tenth. So hello, everyone. It's my first time meeting all of you. I'm excited. So I'm originally from about an hour from here, but I've moved into the community and I've started working and it's been really lovely. I've also started working with our friends group, which, as you know, the friends is the program where we can get money that's separate from the city. So people can say, I want this money to go to children's programs, like specifically. So and then they just fundraise and everything to make sure that we can have a thriving library for our wonderful community. So as you guys also know, because you probably saw on the paper, the friends went through and they were fundraising for a beautiful statue. So if you guys are okay with it, I would like to get approved to go ahead and like, put the statue on library property. So we're kind of thinking actually right behind that window where Beth is at, that's where it would go. So that's really all I need tonight.
Thank you for that and welcome to the Anamosa family.
Thank you. I'm very excited.
Nice to meet you too, but we can't decide on anything tonight since it's not on the agenda.
Item one, Rich.
Okay.
So item one, discussion of possible action on placement of statue to be purchased by the friends of the library on the library grounds.
Moved to approve.
By Kay, second by Alan. Further council discussion. Public comment. Penny.
Sorry. Shane did say that they were able to put the basin for the statue, so we will take care of that internally. And I very much enjoyed meeting Erin and getting to know her these past few weeks, so.
Sorry about the, my misunderstanding. I wasn't reading far enough.
Penny, would you come up to the wall vote, please?
We'll start with Zumba.
Yeah.
Stowe.
Yes.
Gumberg.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Smith.
Yeah.
And Ticken.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. You have your statue. Eight point two, resolution approving the hiring and setting salary for Park and Rec Department Administrative Assistant for fiscal year ending June thirtieth. Twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay.
No, treat them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think we do either.
My bad. I just heard it from that side of the room. I guess I assumed. Again, motion by Rich, second by Teresa. Further council discussion. Public comment. Penny, please.
Yes, Stowe.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yeah.
Ticken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Gumberg.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Eight point three, discussion of possible action on the purchase of field groomer for the Park and Rec Department. Bruce Mile.
Bruce Mile, Assistant Director.
Means you've now been included. You will need to come to the podium.
Selling our parks and rec.
So we're looking at this grooming machine for the fields. We take care of eight fields. A tractor and a drag just does not cut it anymore. And I've always said, since I've been here, one of the first things we see when we come in Anamosa. The fields, and we got to take care of those fields. This is a twelve hundred A bunker machine, brand new, two-year warranty, mating cascade. The other ones, we did some proposals and we went with, we like to go with the one for the seventeen. We'd like to get that, like, if we get it approved, we can get that by June first. But the fields were in dire need and we need to take, start taking care of those fields. Because now the club teams, the rec teams, all going to play on it. And with the club teams, we're charging now to use the fields. So you know how that's going to go. If the fields ain't taken care of, guess who's going to get the rap of that? We are. So I would appreciate it if you could do this. Got any other questions?
Which, which make is it? Not the John Deere, right?
It's John Deere.
It is a John.
Yes. Yes. And what you see is what you get there, you get the blade, front blade, cutting tool and the finish dragging back. And down the road, we can add other parts to it too. Good, I'd like to add it at night.
Okay. What other stuff can you add to it? Just curious.
There's a different blade on the back, a wider finish grade, a bigger blade, two more cutters underneath if you need to. But once we get on top of these fields, and plus this is quicker, I mean, once we get, when we get the fields taken care of, it's a lot quicker than with a lawnmower drag. And, you know, I'll take care of those fields a long time. It's a lot of work, a lot of work. So this will make it easier on all of us.
You've obviously used one before.
Yeah, and the high school just got one. They just purchased one too, their field. And so, you know, we got two of them in town now.
How, how do you transport them between fields?
I would put them on a, on a trailer.
Do you, do you have a trailer to do that with?
Yeah, I got my trailer.
Your trailer?
Yes, and down the road, that's the next thing we might want to get is a trailer.
So how would that work using a personal trailer transporting city equipment?
We have access.
We have access. Yes.
That's where I was kind of heading it. Streets might need to step up and help.
They're doing good. They're, they're, they're helping me out. It's just, it's just me quicker. There's my trailer. Let's hook it up. Let's go. Let's get it done. Versus going down, talking to Shane, he's going to find a trailer where it's at and go from there. But that's just, okay, I won't use my tires.
If you have to, if you have to drive it, is it like the speed of a rain more about that?
There's a way around things.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or we just purchase a trailer.
So.
So this one is nineteen three?
No.
Seventeen nine.
Seventeen nine.
So. There's, there's a couple. So with, with the purchase of the lawnmower the last time, at the last meeting for Parks and Rec. With this purchase, I'm going to assume someplace along the line, we need to amend the budget. Since we've now increased what's coming out of general fund and for Parks and Rec.
Would it be appropriate to talk about the lawnmower from last meeting? We budgeted for this in this year's budget. The lawnmowers we had fixed, we thought we could get through another year and planned on budgeting. The streets budgeted for three lawn, they already have in their budget, three lawnmowers. Maybe we should, instead of amending ours, let them, I mean, we should, they let us use them any, I mean. No, this doesn't.
This does not.
No. Or is it too late from the last meeting, the way that it? We didn't ask for the lawnmower? I mean, we eventually will.
That would have to go back on.
Yeah.
The next agenda for that item, but. For, for this, I'll make a motion to purchase the seventeen nine John Deere twelve hundred A bunker.
I'll second it.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke. Bruce, Shelley, you two worked on. Soliciting these bids together, I think. Would you please state who you spoke with, all the individuals you would have spoke with regarding these?
Well, the one we're going to purchase is Travis, and it started with Travis. From the John Deere. See, that's the thing, you got two codes of different companies, but same company, but two different prices. One was making out of Cascade, one's out of.
I apologize. It's Des Moines, Smith Co. People were from Des Moines. And then there, I also don't know that we talked to Vintrack. I talked to Vintrack dealer.
Just looking for individuals, first names only, all you got to tell. And no one else.
Oh, then there's, there's Tom, the one with the nineteen nine, whatever, but the other, she did the other.
Did I get an email? Okay.
As far as the John Deere twelve hundred A, you only spoke to who? Thank you.
Could you clarify? I, I don't understand.
Do you know someone who has one cheaper?
No, I do not. I wanted, I wanted to make sure that, and there was no influence from anybody else to go with this.
Even before I got hired here. December, I've been working on this, we talked about before you got hired, because I said, if I'm gonna do this, I want a machine that can take care of these fields.
I just, Kay, I just wanted stated for the record that I had nothing to do. Proposing, selecting, directing, anything regarding the John Deere twelve hundred.
We've been working on it for a couple of years, actually. Talking to people and. Researching them.
The creative date is December seventh, and I didn't start until then, so I was working on this before I even started.
Well. Are the, are the prices still good?
Yes, I just talked to Nate prior to coming here, because he told me, and I just started talking to him, it's like. Well, month to month, they're gonna, you know, I said, can you keep it there? And like every month I call and that gets still there, so I just talked to him last week and it's still at that price.
Okay, cuz I saw that some of these quotes ended at the end of January and so forth, so.
So I made sure every month I'd call and make sure we still get the same price.
Any other questions? Public comment. Penny, please.
We'll start with Gumber.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Smith. Token.
Yes.
Samba. So.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point four review and approval of applicant. Messiah Sims to join the animals volunteer fire department. Motion by Kay, second by Alan. Further council discussion. Do not plan on this item to ask for any public comment. Penny.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Token.
Yes.
Samba. So.
Yes.
Gumber.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Review and approval of eight point five review and. Review and approval of professional services agreement with Shive Hattery for the fire station edition project, Ron Hines.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yep, yes. Good evening, Ron, thanks for joining us.
Good evening, Marion Council. Uh, I'm Ron Hines again from Shive Hattery, uh, project manager for the. Fire station addition for the design contract. And I'm here tonight to uh, ask for an amendment that we've submitted to extend our construction administration services. For the past almost eleven months now, we've been working on the construction administration for the project. Uh, and due to the um, delivery of materials for the pre-engineered metal building, we're still waiting that. Uh, billing to arrive, so the actual building construction has not started. The footings and foundations and site work and some of the underground piping and things like that has. Uh, begun and is underway as you approve that application three tonight. But uh, you know, this is just to extend our, our, our services and ask for additional fees on an hourly basis to continue. Uh, performing the construction administrations to accommodate the project construction schedule. Due to the delays. And if you have any questions, I mean, please.
Can you tell me what caused some of these delays?
Uh, it is, it is mainly the delivery of the uh, pre-engineered metal building. We uh, generated the contract uh, eleven months ago with Boomerang, they. Or order, ordered the building, put in a, a schedule to order the building, submitted shop drawings and however, because of the. Uh, current pandemic with, uh, we're experiencing that on many. Building materials, the building could not be delivered until sometime next month, so the building's not even there yet. Middle of the month or third week of the month is when the building is expected to arrive.
Was any of that delay caused by a change order for a different color? Or not?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
So according to this, there's an increase of twenty four thousand because of the delay to the building? That's. Basically it.
Uh, the, the amendment that we've submitted is for an hourly fee of fifteen thousand dollars with the expenses. Uh, to that and uh, we would not exceed that without uh. Consulting you further, so.
Is that a time limit or till the, till the project is completed?
Uh, I have a, I have identified that the uh, that this would terminate on July thirtieth. And uh, the, right now, the building, it's anticipated, the construction will be complete on June thirtieth. Of this year.
I guess just for clarification, I mean, other than, than time. Has there been other? Labor and services on your end that had been done? Because of the delay, I mean, I'm just trying to wrap my head around why the, the.
Sure, we've been, for, for the past eleven months, we've been performing construction administration services, we've been uh. Re- reviewing shop drawings, issuing clarifications, responding to requests for information. Uh, we've been making site observations, so it's just uh, you know, the, the time for extending that time. We continue doing these services. Requires us to, uh, you know, just add, identify that and ask for some additional services to continue. Performing those types of services.
I, I understand that, I just, if, if, you know, taking the time aspect out, times are normal and that the building had showed up. By now, we wouldn't have incurred these additional costs, is that correct?
Correct, the, the uh, contract was uh, written that the building was to be completed by January thirty first of twenty twenty two. So uh, more than likely, we would have, you would have been in the building. By then, if it wasn't for the delay and the providing the building materials. Uh, if that was a question, I did not hear that, I'm sorry. No, you, you would be paying us to continue to perform the construction administration services for the extended. Uh, project construction time schedule in which we would be, uh, again, answering more RFIs, more submittals. Uh, making job site observations. Uh, you know, doing, doing additional construction administrations services for the extended time. That's what the, that's what the amendments for. Yes, yes, for example, uh, we have been, uh, we were on site uh, last Wednesday. Uh, we've been dealing with a, an issue with the concrete foundation and uh. Uh, that's, you know, taken, uh, taken, uh, several hours of time over the past six. To eight weeks, and so, yes, we have been working throughout the months since the contract was uh. Formulated with the contractor. For almost eleven months next week, it will be.
How many times have you been here?
Uh, we've been on site like six times. And uh. And uh, again, we were just there last Wednesday.
So what, let me ask you this, cuz like these other guys. What, what is different about this that? If the, the building had gotten here on time, we'd be done over with. That now you feel the need to charge us another, whatever it was, fifteen thousand.
Yes, it's the extended.
What, what work did you do up to this point to earn the full contract? That now you need another fifteen on top of it, aren't you doing about the same amount of work as you would have? If it was completed on time?
Uh, well, no, unfortunately, we've been doing work for, for a past eleven months and it is just simply the extended. Timeframe for the construction materials to be delivered and as we continue. Performing construction administration services, we will incur the additional. Labor costs is what it amounts to and so. Uh, we have been already performing construction administration services for eleven months. And so it's just simply the, the extension of time where we continue to perform. Construction. Administration services. Once the build, once the building arrives, next month they're going to begin, uh, you know, erecting it. And uh, uh, some of the observations that we've already performed, there, there would have been that already occurring. And so the construction that's going on right now has been limited.
Well, i- if I recall this from the last meeting. Your representative who was here got up and said the contract expired on February twenty eighth. But I don't see that in the original contract anyplace. So what is it? Is, did it actually expire or is it just you have? Come to the conclusion, you've expended all this amount of money and now you need more money?
Uh, we, we have expended uh, the construction administration. Percentage twenty percent of our fee money performing the construction administration so far. Uh, the, the contract termination date is, I established it in the amendment as July thirtieth.
Well, I'm talking about the original contract, where he, he said it expired on February twenty eighth. So I didn't see it in the contract unless you can point it out to me in the original.
It, it states in the contract, it gives you a, a schedule under one point four, it gives you a schedule of, of weeks. And if you uh.
I saw twelve months in there.
Ten to, ten to twelve months, yes. So uh, we're, we're, we've approached that, we've, we've gone past that. Yeah, it's uh, it's just a matter of now we have to perform additional services because of the construction schedule. Because of the delay of the building materials.
So my question is, what's our option if we choose not to do this? Do we have an option?
So we don't have any choice.
Will we be able to have something itemized um, so that we don't end up getting two months in and we're already exceeded that fifteen thousand? I mean, cuz I don't, I don't know what we've done so far. I mean, as far as the invoicing, it's just a percentage complete, it's not X amount of site visits, X amount of. I mean, we've done all the testing separately, that's a separate contract with a testing service.
Yeah, which we, which we uh, take those uh. Testing reports, we evaluate the testing reports that we receive from them and as of recent. Uh, we found that the uh, that there was an, an issue with the concrete and the temperature. And so then that caused us, that caused us to uh. Interact with the contractor to make some corrections, to do some additional testing. To uh, do an additional, you know, to do a, a site observation last Wednesday. Uh, to design the corrections. And so, um, you know, as we perform labor, it just all, it just adds up and especially as we extend the time of the construction. Of the project.
So wouldn't that have been maybe intercepted if that construction oversight had been happening while they were pouring the concrete? Like, I, I don't know if you were on site during that portion. I was not aware of that, if you were, um, I did go to the fire station last Wednesday, um.
We were not on site during the pour, but team services were there to do the testing. And that's how we derived that the uh. That the temperature. Errors.
So will the council have any control over how many visits are being paid or will we have a schedule of how many site visits you're going to do? That come out to this fifteen thousand? I mean, will there just be some, a paper trail and possibly give them at least some information about when you have been there? How much each item is cost?
I can, I can give, I can give you a summary of, I can give, I can itemize the uh, scope of work done for the hourly. Yes.
I mean, I generally get their site reports, but I've only gotten a few, so I haven't really gotten that many since we just really haven't had much happening there. So I don't know if you wanna.
Well, the other, the other thing I would wanna do is instead of, what do you, I think you said you uh, set the. The date is July thirty first for the end of this amendment.
Yes.
That I'd wanna take it to at least August thirty first to give us even a little bit more buffer than just one month. Cuz if there's another little bit of a delay or hiccup. Then in, in July, you're gonna come and ask for more money. So can we just extend it to August thirty first, give us a two month buffer and of the supposed complete date then?
Well, I tried to, I tried to estimate uh, based on what we've been, what we've been spending monthly and that's how I derived it to July. Thirtieth uh, date, of course, if we extended another month, then we'll probably would spend that much more money. Uh, interacting with the contractor and doing the construction administration. Scope of work.
Am I usually copied on the interactions with the contractor cuz I have not noticed that. Level.
Question, there's uh, there's RFIs, there's uh, submittals for shop drawings. There's uh, some ASIs, uh, there's some proposal requests, yes.
Okay.
So you've been copied on a lot of that, those things, Beth, I can, I can forward all that to you again if you'd like or. See what you haven't been copied on.
I can at least pass those along, so you all know what's happening on the project.
That would be good.
So Ron, in summary. Please correct if any of these statements are incorrect. You're seeking an additional fifteen thousand with a sunset date of July thirtieth, twenty twenty two? Plus any additional expenses?
Uh, yes, basically, uh, whether, whether it's travel or whatever, printing or whatever else it is, yes.
Can we table this until we get some documentation about what's been done already? That the emails that were going to be sent? Or do we need to do it tonight?
Would you be able to get the, make sure we have everything, Ron, in the next week or so?
Yes, we can.
So we'll be fine if they made a decision at the next, at the following meeting, which will be in two weeks.
I also think I'm still having trouble with delay thing when my plan starts because of delays. I think that we should be getting reports at least every two weeks with item rates so we know what's going on. I want to see what's happening here. I don't like surprises like this. I'm going to charge my customers for delays on a sheet now when I can't get through a car.
Well, what I'm a little confused at is if they're saying we build on 10% complete, 20% complete, how did we reach 100 and not be complete?
It's upsetting. No offense to you, I don't know, I, I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong, but I, I just don't understand this one at all. I have a lot of trouble. A lot of trouble.
Yeah, I can only, I can only reiterate it's solely due to the time extension of the construction and the amount of effort that we have to make to continue with the construction administration services. And the bill, and the building was to be constructed by January 31st.
My company, when I have a delay because I can't get sheet now, I have to make phone calls. And I have to talk to people and do a little chasing. I don't charge my customer for it. It's not their fault. That's the customer, that's my fault and the people I'm dealing with possibly. And I have to change companies, but right now because of the way the economy is and half our stuff says ships outside the Los Angeles never flights out, we can't get parts in. And I understand you're having the same problem of why we should have to cover expense on that. Doesn't make any sense to me. I'm sorry. I want to see reports every two weeks so we know what's going on.
Council, do you wish to make a decision of either approve the request? Or I know someone had indicated table this. I'd like to see whatever action you're wanting to take in the form of a motion.
Well, if we table this for another two weeks, what are you going to do in that two-week timeframe? Anything?
That, that all depends on the construction process or if there's any questions asked of us or if there's any documentation that we need to issue to aid in the construction of the project.
Well, is there anything you anticipate doing in the next two weeks? If for the last three months, you've occasionally made some trips out and I think what you say administrative?
Well, I would, I would anticipate that there could be some requests for information that we would have to act on or clarifications needed for, from the contractor, whatever, whatever the, you know, facilitating or assisting with providing information to the contractor. That's what we would be doing in the next couple of weeks.
Well, until we see what they've done so far, I'm making a motion to table this.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Table, do you understand that the price at the end could go, our cost at the end could go up?
Well, it could, or we could maybe find somebody else to finish it.
Further discussion? Benny?
Smith?
Yes.
Tuchin?
Yes.
Samba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Comber?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to table carried unanimously. Eight point, thanks, Ron, for being attentive.
All right, thank you.
Eight point six, review and approval of pay application number three to Boomerang Corporation in the amount of $104,321.90 for the well number six bid package two.
Move to approve.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Also discussion. Benny?
You will start with Tuchin?
Yes.
Samba?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Comber?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Eight point seven, review and approval of current bills. Those good proof. Motion by Jeff, second by Alan. That's what I have any questions?
Curious, which, which building has the REC fiber now? There's one on here from the COVID Valley.
Water.
Is there any one that's, that can get it right now?
Yes, we're working on getting city ball on and that is it. Yeah, we were hoping it'd go down towards the wastewater pump, but.
It's very good.
Maybe later.
Page two of the real submitted Iowa Department of Justice forfeitures 16135.
Oh, so we're part of a forfeiture program, so you pay in a fee to be part of that.
Well, that's an annual fee then?
Um, I don't know if it's annual or is it annual or is it based on forfeiture amount? Is it percentage?
It is a percentage of forfeiture amounts. We have actively participated in the program for, it's probably been about three years now. This was actually a discrepancy that they, well, I'm guessing by the time that the wheels of government turned, it's been about three years that they've recognized that we had not paid that from a few years ago. So it was just essentially a notice saying, we overlooked this, we don't see that you have paid this and we're requesting payment for it.
This is to catch up on that time and to be current for the next calendar year?
Well, yes, until we actively use this forfeiture account again, which we have not for a period of time. So until we do, there won't be anything in there, but.
I've never heard forfeiture program, how does that work? What is it or?
Essentially, it's a program, if there's any funds that the police department is involved with through receiving guilty verdicts on different individuals. We may receive if there's funds, money, resources that are involved with that. And we seize any of that stuff, that has to be tracked, submitted to the government to, for them to document. And then they retain a portion of that, that portion, we have to make sure that they, that we have properly documented, they have properly documented it. And then it kind of, again, as that dissipates over the period of time, they keep tracking it. If we don't have any other forfeiture funds, it just slowly goes away.
Thanks, Jim. I do have another question, page three, McQueen kit equipment. Jetta repairs, fourteen hundred and twenty dollars.
I don't know what needs to be repaired on the jetta we've had.
That wasn't the jetta. It was.
Robert Young, Assistant Utilities Superintendent. So I believe what that's for is the jetter actually wasn't going into jet mode. So we can use it in combo, which is using the jetter and everything else. So it wasn't going into standard jet mode. So we had McQueen come out and I believe it was a sensor, but don't quote me on that. So that was for diagnosing sensor and all that other stuff to actually get it to work.
That wasn't under warranty yet?
Again, I don't know what warranty is on that machine. We've had equipment that doesn't have warranty, we've had equipment that does. So it's hard to say what prior people have actually purchased on equipment. So I can't say that it does have a warranty on it.
Remember when we would have purchased that?
That would have been four or five years ago.
No.
Two, two. So potentially it could have a warranty, but I don't know.
McQueen is, we purchased it from, so they would have been on warranty to provide her. So I believe it only probably had a 12-month warranty. They're usually good about letting us know what's ever been, what's not, so.
That's all I have.
No other questions? Can you please conduct the roll call?
Samba?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Comber?
Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Yes.
Approved bills carried unanimously, 9.0 city administrators report.
We had a meeting with the COVID Valley. We've got shot fires between next year. Looks like they're pretty aggressive with their plans to get fiber out to some more places. Other than that, we're just working on the usual stuff.
Thanks. Council, you have any questions for Beth? Thank you. 10.0 mayor and council reports, 10.1 mayor's report, none at this time, 10.2 council reports.
Library board was pretty much usual business. Nothing extraordinary that needs to be discussed, I guess, as a matter of fact.
Thanks, Kay. The others? 10.0, public comment for items not on the agenda. I'll ask that you approach the podium, state your name, residence of address and address the council with your inquiries.
Tom Durgan, downtown property owner. Beth, I haven't really had a chance to say anything. I think it's a sad day for Anamosa. I had a lot I was going to say, you know, I think what you've done is pretty much sums it all up. I've had the opportunity, or maybe not the opportunity, to work with three administrations now. Not a lot with any of them, but I think what you've done, you've done an awesome job for this town. It's, it's sad to see you go. It, it really is. I, I just, it's whatever you're going to do, a lunch lady or babysitter, whatever it is, I, I hope, I hope you do well. And.
She's got to get a dog.
Yeah, maybe get a puppy. So that's all I got to say. Good luck.
Kelly Young, 15843 County Road X 31. Just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done, Beth. And I have really enjoyed seeing all of the departments working together as a result of you becoming the city administrator.
Alan Zoma. 1600 Breckridge Drive, and I'm talking as a citizen, not as a member of the council. You have no idea how sad I am about you leaving. I've watched you take this bit, this whole town from the financial, financial straits to a very sound footing. You've turned this whole crew back here and I'm proud of every damn one of us into a group that works together. I've never, as long as I've lived in this town, seen it, things go as well as they have. If there's any way I could change it, I would. Thank you. Let me get to know you.
Sue Crump, 420 Holt Street. Beth, you've been a breath of fresh air. I sat and watched two other administrators and didn't see half of what you've got accomplished. You've taken a lot of crap from a lot of people and you put up with it professionally. And I'm just so proud of you and I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot by letting you go. So good luck with your babysitting job or whatever it is you're doing.
Nancy Schaefer, 803 North Division Court. I want to address a couple other things. As far as tabling the appointment of interim city administrator clerk and thinking it should be a closed session. Tonight, you set the hiring of the library director. February 14th, you have the, you set the hiring and setting a salary of deputy city clerk. February 28th, you set the hiring and setting a salary of part-time temporary patrol officer. There's been instances where we have lost administrative and supervisory positions. And we have slid other people in that were already in employment and it was not necessary to do a closed session on it. I think that when we hired Chief White, looking at his resume, there was a bonus there and it's too bad that it wasn't approved tonight. I don't think there was anything that was happening that shouldn't have happened with that appointment tonight. So, and once again, thank you, Beth. And I, I think people don't realize what you did. And one of the big things is bringing metal design to town. And I have talked with, with Craig out there, or our company has, and he is very sad to see you go. And I wouldn't be surprised that he hasn't said that to you. Big feather in the cap for Anamosa. So thank you very much.
No other public comment? This meeting is adjourned.